Good evening. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we always do, let us remain standing and think about our troops that are serving here and overseas. Thank you, may I ask you? Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting. It's now 7:00 PM. Trustee Alpert.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
And trustee Saberman.
Present.
Okay. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 8th at 7:00 PM. Note the change. And the next regular workshop meeting will be October 25th at 7:00 PM. This evening, we have a presentation from Extel Acquisitions in regards to the Avon Nail Enamel Building and its own change petition. So, Mr. Emanuel? Thank you.
Good evening all. My name is Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberger, and Stout. And I represent Avon Capital.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Can you just speak a little closer to the mic?
Is this a little better?
Yes, please, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. My name, again, for the record, is Stephen Rabel. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberger, and Stout. And I'm here on behalf of Avon Capital Corporation and Avon Products Inc., who are the operators of 37 Washington Avenue, the site of the old Nail Enamel Building, as I'm sure...
I'm sorry, once again, we just have in trouble hearing you.
All right, I'll do my best to stay close to the microphone.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So, as I'm sure you remember, the Nail Enamel Building is a bit of an underutilized asset for Avon. And as we mentioned to you at our work sessions over the spring and summer, Avon had been searching for a buyer for the property. So, I'm happy to say we've... Is it all right if I keep going?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy to say we've reached a deal with Extel Acquisitions. And we are simply here tonight to say that we are fully in support of Extel's petition to the board. So, with that, I will turn it over now to Ira. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Ira Emanuel, Emanuel Law PC, New City, New York. I am the attorney for Extel Acquisitions. Extel, many of you may know, is one of... It is a very large real estate developer. They're very active down in New York City and also the New York City metropolitan area. And they have a... I'm a little too loud now. Extel is very pleased to be here to...
Thank you, Kathy.
Extel is very pleased to be embarking on this potential acquisition and development. The parcel you all know is the Avon Nail Enamel Building. It's up between the community center and the railroad on Washington Avenue. It also goes all the way through to Sufferin Place. So, it's a nice square or rather rectangular parcel. It's about 1.86 acres. Extel is asking the board to consider rezoning the parcel to its TDD, Transit Development District zoning. That zoning district allows for multifamily development at approximately 65 units per acre. And it's the same zoning district that was developed and implemented for the Sheldon. Now, I know that many people were somewhat skeptical of the Sheldon when it was first proposed. Some people were outright opposed to it when it was first proposed. But I think we can all agree that it went up. It's a beautiful looking building. It filled up almost immediately. And it's become... I think it's become a real asset to the villagers of Sufferin. And we're hoping that we can replicate that kind of success both for Extel and for the village with this particular project. So, the proposal is for 140 units, a mix of studios, one and two bedroom units. There would be rental units. There would be 210 parking spaces that are proposed, and that meets the requirement of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Of those 210 spaces, we're currently proposing 186 to be in a garage. That would be the lowest level of the building. The residences would be above that. 26 would be outside and would be available for sharing with local merchants. And we will get into the details of that in just a bit. So, what we would be asking for at the end of this evening is for the board, obviously, to continue its consideration to refer the petition that we had submitted to the board out to the various agencies that are required, including the Rockland County Planning Department and your own Sufferin Village Planning Board. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stuart Johnson, who is from Minno-Wosco, our architects. And he's going to walk you through the project.
We have a small packet so you can present, and we'll follow along in a publican view.
There's a couple of new exhibits, so maybe if you could just hang tight. All right, we'll see what happens. Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So, again, my name is Stuart Johnson. I'm a principal at Minno-Wosco Architects and Planners. We are a 95-person architecture firm headquartered in Lambertville, New Jersey, with an office in Newark, New Jersey. We're very active in the Rockland County area as well as northern New Jersey. So, I'm happy to be here this evening to represent Extel Development. I was also involved with Avon when they were initially looking at the site for, you know, possibly repurposing this for a multifamily use or alternate and best uses of the site. So, it's a pleasure to be back in front of some of these board members this evening in person, not virtual. So, again, the consideration here is for a zone change from the central business district to that of the existing Transit Development District, the TDD Zone, which the Shelby Multifamily Apartment Building is part of. What we're proposing for here is a new multifamily community we're building, which is five stories and consists of approximately 140 apartment units, which is comprised of studio one and two-bedroom units, as previously noted. There are also 210 parking spaces on site that comply with the 1.5 parking ratio of the TDD. Slide one that I have on the board here and that you have in your package is an existing area site plan that highlights the site. Again, it's an ideal site found within the downtown of the village. The site has great proximity to the shops and dining found on Lafayette Avenue. The site has frontage on Washington Avenue to the east. It has frontage on Sufferin Place to the west. And it also has frontage on the existing freight rail lines and its right-of-way to the north. Currently, that right-of-way of the train line is actually being used... It appears to be being used as a sort of cut-through between Sufferin Place and Washington Avenue. Sufferin Place currently is a dead-end street, which has access to the municipal parking lot further west. So, one of the key things of this application we'll talk about is it provides for a vehicular connection between Sufferin and Washington Avenue, which is something differing from the earlier concept that we had shared with the community.
So, that connection, I'm sorry, the connection in between Sufferin Place and Washington Avenue in that right-of-way that you're speaking about, would that be on the Avon property itself?
It would be on the Avon property. So, it would be within the 1.87...
Within that area.
Within that property, correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, what we're proposing is 210 parking spaces. There are 184 structured spaces internal to the building and 26 surface spaces exterior to the building off of that drive, which one of the things that we're here to talk about this evening is that those 26 spaces could be shared with village patrons during daytime business hours. The residential multifamily use and that of shops and retail patrons of the downtown or employees of some of the shops and mercantile businesses are a symbiotic use for shared parking. So, with that then, if we get a dance to the next slide.
I have a question. Are the parking spaces going to be reserved for the residents? In other words, meaning like every resident is assigned certain spaces? Or how is that like... How does that play into the fact that some of the spots become available during the day for local businesses, as you said?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, the 184 structured spaces internal to the building would be assigned to the units. And there would be secure key fob access for residents to gain access to that building. Again, that's ideal for security purposes for multifamily buildings. Typically, you know, it can be problematic bringing the public into a private apartment building, especially, you know, returning home after hours in the garage could be a little darker and lighting. The 26 surface spaces exterior of the building would be signed as such that they would be available, again, either to employees of businesses within the downtown that would have tags in their cars, or they could be open to the public. But signage would be there, and that would be maintained by the management company of the building.
But so they are assigned? They would be assigned to residents, or they wouldn't be?
So, residents would... Each resident would get minimally one space underneath the building.
Yeah.
And then the spaces exterior of the building would be for residential use on nights and weekends, overnight hours. But again, it would be signed that those spaces could be used by members of the republic during daytime.
I see. So, in other words, nobody's regular parking space would be one of the ones outside, is what you're saying?
Well, we would expect that the spaces exterior of the building would be for resident use during the evening hours.
Okay.
Right? So, we would expect that based on tenant demand that those spaces might be used by guests, tenants of the buildings, or their visitors.
I see.
And that's factored into the 1.5 parking ratio required in the TDD Zone.
Do you have visitor/guest parking assigned?
So, no. So, those spaces are factored into that parking ratio of the...
26?
Correct. So, the 26 spaces could be used by guests for, you know, for overnight guests in the building or daytime guests. We also, I would add, is that, you know, we do have parallel parking spaces on Sufferin Place. Well, public parallel parking spaces that could be used the same way they're currently being used today for the new use of this property.
Do we pick up an additional parallel parking on Sufferin Place with the new structure in place? I believe there's loading docks there and...
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know that we do pick up any new parallel parking spaces on Sufferin Place, but there's certainly an opportunity to consider on-street parking on Washington Avenue if that was something that the village contemplated.
I think we would pick up a few spots on Sufferin Place.
You might. I mean, you might certainly, or at least some of the people who park there now are more industrial uses or employees of some of those spaces. So, the other slides we have in the package. Yeah, this exhibit is the area where the building shows the context. In your package, you have a wall that is actually the second floor of the building. But it just shows the proximity of the building to transit and the downtown area. It's an old objective of the TDD Zone, which should create a livable, walkable downtown, provide a free multifamily housing within the downtown that supports the existing retail and mercantile business, and really provide a convenient housing in Washington. Then, this exhibit in this slide, the package, is the ground floor plan of the building. So, you see the area pocheted in gray is the structured parking internal to the building. Those are the 184 parking spaces. The area pocheted in yellow is the main residential lobby with frontage on Washington Avenue. So, comparable to the previous schemes, this building provides for new streetscape improvements. So, the existing condition there today is sort of a haphazard five-to-six-foot sidewalk condition on both Sufferin and Washington Avenue. This would propose for a new wider sidewalk condition. It's approximately 14 feet or so from curb to building, which allows for new street trees or a planting strip, minimum six-to-eight-foot wide clear sidewalk, and then perimeter landscaping where the building meets the hardscape to soften up the frontage of Washington Avenue. And really, again, I think that goes back to meeting some of the goals of the TDD Zone is to create a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape and front door to this new multifamily building, better pedestrian connectivity to Lafayette Avenue. And you see a similar condition on Sufferin Place with new streetscape improvements, new street trees versus the existing condition there today. I think maybe there's one street tree on Washington Avenue sort of inset from the curb, if that. And you'll see on this ground floor plan, conveniently adjacent to the building, there are 26 surface parking spaces. And you'll see the 24-foot-wide cartway providing access to those spaces, but again, providing two-way vehicular travel in the east-west direction between Sufferin Place and Washington Avenue, eliminating the dead-end condition that currently exists on Sufferin.
My slide says 25 shared spaces, not 26. I just want to mention that.
I'm sorry?
The slide here says 25 shared spaces, not 26.
Yes, there was a typo on the slide. It was intended to say 26.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the 26 spaces external, the 184 internal, that provides for 210, as noted. And then as you move vertically in the building...
Let's just go back to the ground floor. I'm sorry. It looks like a drop-off zone in the front on Washington Avenue. Is that something that you're proposing?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, Mr. Mayor?
It looks like on Washington Avenue at the front door, at the entrance to the building, it looks like a drop-off zone. Is that something that you're looking at?
That's correct. So, we've actually created a... We've recessed the building there. And so, we've recessed the building inward by a few feet to create a break in the facade of that building, if you will. You know, the facade amassing the building are really sort of next steps, but that allows us to break up the architecture of the building. But in doing that, that also allows us to create a drop-off area in front of the building, designing thousands of apartment buildings and specializing in multifamily apartment design, understanding the operations. There are considerations for drop-off, being mail, FedEx, UPS, those type of services, or Uber or Lyft-type drop-off. That pulls that out of the drive aisle or the driveline in the south, the south lane there on Washington Avenue.
Great, looks good.
So, that was a smart aspect of the design. And then, one of the other features, we do have a secondary lobby. It's a smaller convenience lobby, which is where we intend for residential move-ins to occur off of Sufferin Place. But there's a secure key fob access and access to an elevator on the western portion of that ground floor. So, residents of the building who maybe are headed to the shortest direction to the train station or downtown dining, they have access to the building on that southwestern corner. So, with that then, I'm going to advance to the second floor of the building. There are four levels of residential apartment units over the ground floor parking and residential lobby. There are 140 units. The current concept proposes for approximately four studio units, 48 one-bedroom units, and 88 two-bedroom units. The previous concept that was shared had 174 apartment units, and it was a six-story structure. It was four levels of apartments over two levels of structured parking. So, the current concept is a scaled-back version of that. It's one less building story. You know, it's several less... It's approximately 34 less apartment units and one less level of structured parking. So, with that, you know, naturally, other things come into play. So, the earlier concept that was shared contemplated plus or minus 40 parking spaces internal to the building for public use. Again, we're proposing 26 spaces that could be shared during daytime hours. And again, we're proposing the vehicular connection there on the Avon property connecting Sufferin and Washington Avenue. The second floor of the building here provides for an open-air courtyard, an amenity courtyard with resort-style pool, outdoor dining, and passive recreation opportunities for the residential apartment units. The building's open on the western side to allow for natural light into that courtyard and creates for a passive recreation area, but also an attractive landscape courtyard for residents of the building who are looking down on it. Internal to the building here on this level, you know, we would expect a club room, private event room for residents of the building, state-of-the-art fitness center, as well as some coworking-type lounge space. And then the upper floors of the building generally stack, so units are designed to stack vertically for structural-mechanical efficiency. And so, with that, I mean, that really sort of concludes our conceptual presentation of the proposed site. You know, just wanted to go back to a few key points, goals and objectives of that TDD Zone, which is to facilitate redevelopment of properties in proximity of the train station, encourage a livable, walkable community for residents in proximity of mass transit, and to support existing mercantile and commercial uses, and also to develop new multifamily buildings located within the downtown of the village, the core of the village, that have easy walking distance to downtown shops. So, with that, I mean, I'm happy to answer any further questions, or Ira, you know, if you have any other comments.
Does anyone have any questions from the board?
I'd like to make a few comments.
Sure.
I like your design. I'd like to be your partner in making this happen. I want to go back and revisit kind of the whole story that this first started as a breaking of the pilot agreement to buy the enamel building to make it a parking lot in the village of Sufferin because we're in need of parking. That did not work out. So, I looked at this as a win-win where the Nail Enamel Building gets sold, the pilot agreement, we agree to break it, but in return, the village would get a substantial amount of parking for village needs. So, when I'm scratching some pencil marks on the back of this paper and I see that you have 140 units, my vision was there would be an entrance under that building where the residents would enter, and I'm going to say there would be 140 parking spots in that entrance. Then there would be a second entrance that you didn't need a fob to get into. And there would be 70 units that could be used for people coming to the village. And, you know, I'm seeing that, you know, we need to kind of work together to make what you're proposing and what I had in mind to break the pilot agreement and make all of this happen come a little closer together.
Yeah. Well, that's a, you know, that's a great comment. And, you know, Extel was certainly engaged to work with the village and certainly look at the plan and see ways that we might be able to provide additional parking on site
I'm sure we can work something.
For public use.
What led to the change as far as having one less floor? Is that a recommendation that you heard from either the planning board or the village board or...?
So, that was really looking at the site and looking at the cost of construction and the height of the building. I mean, architecturally, I can say I think five stories is more appropriate with the mass and the scale of the architectural character found within, you know, the core of the village. It's one less level of structured parking. And the other part of it is to support, you know, the cost to build an additional level of structured parking. You know, the dollars and cents don't necessarily work out for development on the site. You know, there's a math equation associated with that.
Right. Okay, thank you. I am in agreement with trustee Barone as far as... I am in agreement with trustee Barone as far as the number of spots made available to the public.
Sure.
In sort of an exchange for getting out of the pilot.
We can certainly study opportunities. Again, I think, you know, we can certainly study opportunities for the potential for additional public parking spaces on site.
Thank you.
Does the number of units coincide with the TDD as it is today?
No.
Or will you seek a variance?
Do you want to speak to that, Ira?
Sure.
It's higher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the TDD Zone allows up to 65 units per acre. Based upon the 1.86 or 1.87 acres that we have, that would allow 121 units. So, we would need some relief. We're asking as part of the petition that the TDD Zone be amended to allow for additional density. And that would allow us to go up to the 140 units per acre. I think it works out to somewhere around 70 units per acre, somewhere around 70 units per... A little over 70 units per acre.
Okay, also, I noticed that in the diagrams in regards to parking, the designation of the parking spots that are currently in the garage area are labeled T and C. Does that dictate compact cars?
It does. So, the garage currently shown, there are 46 compact spaces which are permitted. The compact spaces are about 22% of the parking spaces are compact. And we have 19 tandem spaces. So, 19 tandem spaces which equate 38 spaces. Those would be assigned to two-bedroom apartment units within the development. Again, I noted that we have 88 two-bedroom apartment units. So, that would allow...
How would you assign a compact space when a resident may or may not have a compact vehicle moving into an apartment?
Well, we're seeing... So, the compact parking spaces, I believe, so a standard space complying with residential site improvement standards is nine feet by 18 feet. The compact spaces we are showing are approximately eight to eight-and-a-half feet wide. And then, you know, many of them are the same length. It's just that they're a little narrower. Some of them are 17 and a half feet in...
The size is relevant. I'm going to ask the question again.
I'm sorry.
I don't care about the size. My question is, Mr. Jones moves into apartment 304.
Right.
He has an SUV, but the apartment has been assigned a C spot? I mean, how's that workable?
So, where I was trying to go with that is most standard SUV sizes, compact SUV sizes and sedans all fit perfectly fine within that. Many municipalities have actually adopted smaller off-street parking standards for private residential facilities. So, naturally, if someone was moving to the building, if they had an F-150 pickup truck or something a little bit larger, a minivan, and needed a little bit more space, they would be assigned to standard space. But your typical compact SUV or sedan fit just fine in those compact parking spaces.
Is there any benefit? No, it's... It would seem to me that making all the... No, it's, it would seem to me that making all the spots equal would be more beneficial to the residents. Whatever that equal is, maybe they're all compact. But the point is that some apartments have better spots than others doesn't seem right.
Yeah. I mean, it's very typical multifamily apartment buildings that you might find compact parking spaces, and in general, they're making cars nowadays smaller than older Cadillacs and Lincolns and cars that, when off-street parking standards were set. The last thing I'll just note is that this is a private residential apartment building, so it's a little bit different than a public parking garage. So residents are assigned the same space, you're making the same turning movement into the same space, going to the same space morning or night after night. It's different than that of a public parking garage where you're hunting and finding spaces. So people are used to the maneuverability in a private garage.
We'll have to, something to think about.
When you design a building, which is going to be around for a very long time, and you design the parking, is it on your radar yet that five or 10 years from now, all those cars are going to be electric and need to be charged?
That's a great comment. So, yes, it is. So one of the things we had talked about previously is that the ExTeL, well, we had talked about previously that Avon would, but ExTeL certainly would provide a certain number of, I would likely speculate that minimally 10 EV charging spaces would be brought online day one with the infrastructure in place to add additional spaces over time. The key is that the transformers in the electrical service to the building is sized to accommodate additional load demand as user demand or technology continues to advance. So the, you know, short answer is yes. Yeah, we're seeing that in the market.
So are you looking for a pilot program as well, or are you just going to come in and take care of everything as someone normally would?
Do you want to speak to that, Eric?
At the moment, we're just trying to get this project, at the moment, we're just trying to get this project moving. We really have not discussed financing or pilot agreements or anything like that.
Okay. But it's a possibility.
Everything, if you ask a lawyer if something is possible, the answer is always yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any further? Well, thank you very much. What about our next steps, Mr. McGrino?
Well, if the board is amendable, it would be to send it to the planning board. I would certainly review it and make some comments. And then, at the next meeting, if the board is amendable to continue it, to set a public hearing and send it around for county planning input, et cetera. I don't know if the board had any proposed changes, if it likes it as is. One thing that I noticed with regard to the 140 units, what they're asking is for you to change the TDD. Not only put the TDD zone on this property, but change it. Alternatively, you could grant it the TDD, and they would go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. But if it's before this board, it would really seem to make sense for you to entertain whether or not you want the 140 units or not.
I would need some time on that.
Okay. So that would be to send it out to the planning board for comment, and when it comes back, this board can comment on that and make a decision as whether or not it wants to entertain it at the current level or make some change.
And I do think the parking is very tight. We already have a parking situation with the Sheldon, and I know you're modeling after the Sheldon. We already have a parking situation with the Sheldon. So, you know, but again, you know, like Trustee Barone said, you know, we can work that through.
Right. Right. We're certainly willing, and we want to work with the board, with all of the boards that we would be encountering from the village, the planning board, this board, as the project goes on. We're just trying to get it kicked off right now. And so referrals out to the various agencies, to your planning board, to the county planning department, would certainly be a good way to start this. As we get those comments back, you know, Mr. Giannino was there, listening intently. I'm sure that he has some thoughts. I'm sure your planning board is going to have some thoughts. I know the planning department is going to have some thoughts. We'll deal with them as they come. But we'd like the board to start the process so that we can start getting that input as we've started to get some input from you this evening.
Sounds good. So I'm going to make the recommendation to send it to the planning board for their review and comment, and it will be back to the village board. They'll report back to the village board.
Okay. And what about the county planning department?
Well, I mean, if you look at the statute, it's really not ready for that yet, but I think we'll send it to the village planning board, maybe ask a planner on the village's end to review it, which is something the applicant would be willing to post an escrow for.
Sure.
And we can discuss that and then go from there and get a report back, and then the village board can decide how it wants to proceed, either as is with changes, et cetera.
And we would be happy to appear in front of the village's planning board as it is considering this referral at either a regularly scheduled meeting or if they want a special meeting, we certainly make ourselves available.
Have you been presenting to the school board?
Not yet.
Okay.
This is your village. We start here.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My Tic Tacs, new little holdouts.
Who's Jeremy? Is he out there?
Right there.
Okay. Yeah, same. Just want them to clear out. Okay. Next up, Chief Jeremy Koffler, Suffering Fire Department.
Maybe it was really Rob.
Was he your planning board teacher too?
Uh-uh. Only had one. Oh, no. He was.
Good evening, village board. Just an update. We don't have anything on the agenda. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, we are going to go back into the schools this year to do fire prevention. So October 13th, we'll be at the YMCA on Parkside Drive, and on October 15th, we'll be doing Connor School during the day for all the classrooms. And then at nighttime, we're going to go back to something we did many years ago, which we haven't done in a while, which is save the principal. So the principal will be on the roof, and the fire trucks will come in and rescue the principal and bring her down. And that's going to be at nighttime. And I want to thank village clerk Lisa Ann for helping me with that, with getting all the documents from the insurance company. And that's it.
Sounds good.
Let us know what time that is.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM on all days?
Friday, October 15th, for the save the principal.
That's at Connor School?
That's at Connor School, correct.
Sounds good. Great event at the car and truck show. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It was.
All righty. Thank you.
How do you like that new TV?
I'm sorry?
How do you like the new TV?
The new?
Didn't you get a TV donated?
Oh, I don't know who won it. Do we know who won it?
Oh, you weren't there.
No.
Oh, Mr. Mike Curly won it.
Oh.
And donated it back to the fire department.
Well, I'm going to have to find out, because I know nothing about that.
Group communication.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Rockland, Suffering Police Department.
Good evening, board members. Just for an update, in the month of September, the police department responded to 810 calls for service. In addition to our normal routine patrol duties, we participated in the Suffering Street Fair, where we set up our booth and handed out candy and informational coloring books to children, as well as T-shirts, coffee mugs to adults. We also had several of our vehicles, such as our Dare Corvette, our Dare Truck on display. We received very positive feedback from the attendees and look forward to participating in next year's street fairs. Our Dare hockey program is up and running for the year. The team draft was completed, and opening night was this past Friday, October 1st. All of the Dare hockey games are going to be played on Friday evenings. We have a total of eight teams for the fall season, four consisting of the second and fourth grade children, and four teams consisting of the fifth and sixth grade children. Several of our officers are volunteering their time to coach teams and make the season a success for the kids. As you all know, Suffering Day was Saturday, October 2nd. We participated in this event also. We had several law enforcement agencies on scene who had set up equipment and had demonstrations. We had several police canine demonstrations. The sheriff's department's mounted bomb and arson units, SWAT displays, and numerous other public safety participants on hand. We had some of our vehicles and equipment on display also, and had some giveaways for children who attended. As for our agenda items tonight, the first agenda item was to act on a donation of a vehicle to the police academy, a vehicle that we had previously declared a surplus. I'm going to ask that the board table that for tonight. The police academy is working out some administrative things on their end. They're not ready to take possession of the vehicle yet, so I'm hoping to revisit it at the next workshop meeting.
Okay.
My second agenda item is a request that the board appoint Mr. Rory McGrath to a vacant position of parking enforcement aide that was created by recent resignation, and that will be pending final approval from the Rockland County Department of Personnel. Mr. McGrath is a Rockland County resident, majors in criminal justice at RCC, and has a lifelong goal of pursuing a career in law enforcement. He's currently a volunteer fireman in the county and has interned with the New York City Department of Corrections. He is very eager for the opportunity and would like to begin his career in public service, so I would ask that the board nominate him tonight.
So I have the resolution here appointing Rory McGrath as parking enforcement aide part-time, upon, effective upon an application and approval from Rockland County personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Alfred.
Do I have a second?
Second trustee Salvin.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My next agenda item is to request the board nominate Mr. James King to the position of part-time dispatcher off of the current dispatcher CAD open competitive list. Mr. King is currently an FDNY EMT and is about to complete his training as a paramedic. Mr. King is also a Rockland County resident, and his training and experience with the FDNY will make him a welcome addition and an asset to our department.
So I have the resolution authorizing the nomination of James King to the position of dispatcher part-time. Resolved, board of trustees hereby nominates James King to the position of dispatcher part-time off of the Rockland County Personnel List of Eligibles. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second trustee Alfred.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My last item is not an agenda item, I just wanted to update the board on the request that I made at the last workshop meeting in regards to purchasing of one marked and one unmarked police vehicle utilizing COVID relief offer funding. Since that meeting, I provided vehicle quotes to the treasurer's office, which I believe will be forwarded out to the board for your review. As I noted in the workshop meeting, myself, DPW supervisor Hunt, and Mr. Giannito, the village treasurer, have had lengthy discussions in regard to the current status of the police department's vehicle fleet, and we feel that a replacement cycle of one vehicle per year will not be sufficient to upkeep the fleet. As we've discussed in the past, many of our vehicles are aged and require costly repairs. We feel that a one-vehicle-per-year replacement schedule will likely cause the village to have to purchase multiple vehicles in the upcoming years in order to keep the fleet operational. It's my recommendation to the board that we get on a regular vehicle replacement schedule in order to have a safe and operational fleet, while ensuring that replacement costs are predictable and stable, to ensure residents are not burdened with costs of having to replace multiple vehicles in upcoming budget years. At the request of the mayor, I'll be meeting with the mayor and treasurer Giannito on Wednesday morning to discuss this further and look at some possible funding solutions. I just wanted to let the board know that that was going on, and I'll let you know the status of our discussions.
Great. Thank you, chief. Once again, I agree with the chief as he proposed in the annual budget, the need and necessity for additional radio cars or patrol cars based on officer safety, responding to calls, and the need and necessity for a replacement program. There's funding possibly that will be available. I'll be meeting with the chief and the treasurer to discuss these options, but I recommend also that we move forward with this, with these replacement cars.
Thank you.
Thank you to, I'm sorry, thank you to all the guys in the sheriff's department and Ramapo Police Department, the MTA, everyone that came out to make Suffering Day a great success on the law enforcement end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, village board. So a few things that we have coming up. Our programs over at the center, we have chair exercise on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10:00. We have stay-fit exercise on Mondays and Thursdays at 11:00 to 1:00. We have chair yoga classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00 AM. We have Zoom on Fridays at 10:00 AM. Suffering Day, as been mentioned before, was fantastic. We had beautiful weather, we had great crowds. It was a wonderful day. The village really highlighted all that we have to offer. So I'm proud to have worked with so many wonderful departments, and we are a great team that really pulled it together. So very happy with Suffering Day. This next Wednesday, the 13th, the nutrition workshops are starting again. That will be on Wednesday, the 13th, at 11:00. And then on October 16th, there's two events happening. We'll be having the window painting, which is the middle school. That's grade six, seventh, and eighth. We have already 23 groups that are participating. And as a follow-up, Mr. Alfred, last year, you had suggested maybe changing up the team numbers because of COVID last year. We did last year, and we kept it that way this year, and I think it's great. I think it's a nice fit for the program, so we have two kids, or one or two kids per team, and it's a nice, it's a nice change. So sometimes things change for the better, not knowing what the outcome is, but it's working out, it's working out well. So 23 teams of kids from the middle school are participating. At the rosary, at the gazebo, there will be a rosary at the gazebo on Saturday, the 16th as well. On Saturday, October 23rd, Connor School will be having their bike rodeo. We're working together with the PD and Connor School with that. That's at 10:00 AM in the morning. The Halloween, I have to scratch off the word parade. It will be Halloween trunk or treat, and it will be on Saturday, October 23rd, at 2:00 PM. It will be in the same lot as we had last year. It was tremendous success. Again, things change sometimes for reasons, and the trunk or treat turned out very well, and that's what we're going to go ahead with this year. Not the village, but the chamber, we'll be doing the Halloween pub crawl on October 29th. And I just wanted to mention at the end of the recreation items, many of you have been part of Pearl Harbor events in the past, and we lost a wonderful, wonderful man who helped the village for many years. Mr. Armando Chigalera passed last week, and we will miss him tremendously from the village. So I just wanted to mention that. We, very sad to hear that he's passed, but he was a tremendous man and many great years here at the village with him. So, and that is it for me. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I enjoy looking at the village's Facebook page, and frequently, I see pictures of our elected officials on the Facebook page. So at Suffering Day, I took some pictures myself, and I asked you to post them, and you told me that there were other things that I needed to do. Could you go over that procedure and tell me why I can't just send you a picture and it shows up on our Facebook page?
Well, just for clarification, we didn't put any pictures up for Suffering Day as of yet. Facebook has been down, so right now, there's no, there's no photos from anyone from Suffering Day.
All right. You told me I had to send my pictures to Rob and the whole board. Is that for some preapproval?
I did ask for Rob, I don't know if you want to comment on that. I did ask, so I know a few meetings ago, board members want to now add pictures and items to Facebook and to the newsletter. For my own sake, and I think for all of you, it's easier for everybody to see the same information, because as information comes into us, we filter it, we log it, we see what goes in for the newsletter and for Facebook. So I asked you, I asked you to send it to the whole board, to the mayor and to Rob. That was... That was...
So going forward, all pictures on the Facebook will be sent to the full board first?
That's not my clue.
So mine don't need to be unless everyone's need to be?
Yeah, well, I'll just clarify, as a board member...
I'll speak to it, Kathy. I'm sorry. I think the whole problem lies here is that we need a specific policy. Day-to-day operations and activities that go on in the village of Suffolk that need to be noticed immediately, or that need to be noticed to the general public, will be posted immediately when necessary. Going to post other information that is filtering in from three or four different trustees needs to be filtered and gathered, and the message needs to be consistent. That's where the problem lies. We had this discussion last month. We need a specific policy in place that will allow for us to be able to post information.
Mayor, the board passed a resolution that is contrary to what you're stating.
Okay, no, the village did pass a resolution, and in the resolution it does state that any information will be submitted to the entire board and the attorney.
And that should go...
In this case, it did not happen.
That should go also for...
But we're not talking, Mr. Barone is speaking about his photo that he sent in.
I understand.
Okay.
You have posted materials as well. In fact, I saw some recent posts by you, Mayor, on Facebook, and basically it had your picture, Mayor Markounis, and, you know, presents this, so forth and so on.
Yes.
And it did not list the village board. We did not see the pictures to approve the pictures. You just go ahead and you put up whatever you want, but you're saying the board can't, and the board is saying we will not tolerate this.
Okay.
This must end immediately.
Okay.
So the same rules need to apply uniformly, so if the mayor can post without the board seeing it first, the board can post without the mayor's...
You're not getting it. The information that needs to be disseminated to the public does not need to be readied on upon the board to push out that information.
If it's emergency purposes, of course...
That's why we need a policy. We need a specific policy, not a fly-by-night resolution saying everybody has to, everybody needs to approve this and that.
Okay, so Mayor, the Village of Suffolk on October 1st...
We don't even have the completed resolution with the language.
Mayor, I'm talking.
Go ahead.
On October 1st at 8:56 p.m., it is posted from the Village of Suffolk on the Facebook site, "A great opening night under the lights for Suffolk Dare Hockey, thanks to the Suffolk Police Department and all the volunteers for their help in making this start of a successful season."
Your mic kicked out.
Okay. I'm hoping people can sort of hear me because I'm speaking loud. I don't know why my mic kicked out. However, my point is that it says sincerely, "Mayor Ed Markounis." It does not say sincerely, "Ed Markounis and the village board..."
Were you at the hockey rink?
I happen to not be at the hockey rink.
Were any of the board members at the hockey rink?
That's not the point.
No, it is the point. I'm not going to attach anybody else's name that was not in the, at the function.
If you would be cooperative, I'm talking. It's called being polite. That's something you lack. Anyhow...
Thank you.
My point is that the village board serves the residents, the mayor serves the residents, we all serve the residents. We are all supposed to be a contiguous board, but you hijack the board very commonly and take credit for everything, and it is not appreciated. And this board will not tolerate that. And with any luck, this mayor will not be mayor in two months. Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have a problem if Kathy posts the picture I sent her today?
I don't know if they...
I didn't see the picture. You need to send the picture to the entire board and to the attorney.
I'm asking the board if they need to see it.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Or can she just go ahead and post it?
As one of the village posts. And sorry, Kathy, you're in the middle of this, but, you know, that's how it rolls in this village. We can't seem to ever be on the same page because of one person.
It seems we have four people that agree on something and one person that disagrees, but that one person believes he has power over the other four. I have a problem with that.
So no one objects if she posts it?
Correct.
All right, can you please post it?
If I could just make a comment...
Hold on, Kathy, I'm sorry. The board doesn't have the authority, the statutory authority, to direct any member of the workforce.
The board is a legislative body of this village.
Okay.
All right, so how about we agree upon this? Charlie, send it to Ed and to the attorney, and Kathy...
And the board.
And the board, and please post it tomorrow. Does that sound reasonable, gentlemen?
Well, before it gets posted, I will provide you my legal advice to the board, okay? And then the board can proceed. If it wishes to make that pronouncement, it can, but there are some issues, you know, with the posting, but I'll put that in an email to the board.
It's not a horrible picture. No one's doing something wrong.
I didn't say anybody's doing anything wrong. I just said I will give you my legal advice confidentially.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Great job on Suffolk Day. Great turnout.
Kathy, I do have one more question. I'm sorry. It's simple. The nutrition workshop, is that also going to be part of the newsletter and everything? Like, we were doing the competition last year?
Uh, that... The competition was a whole separate kind of entity...
Because of COVID?
Yeah. No, well, yeah, it was. Actually, there was more things that we were looking to do. The nutrition workshop is in-person. We can talk about it, see if we're going to do more on it, but the nutrition workshop itself is in-person at the community room. So we can look at different options, but I think that was, if I remember correctly, it was an item that people gave in.
Right.
But this one is physically in-person nutrition workshop.
Okay. Maybe we can think about doing that online again for people that still aren't comfortable overcoming...
Makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Kathy, you guys did a great job. You, Elaine, and Nancy, the DPW staff, everyone with that turnaround on Suffolk Day, picking it up and turning it over into the fireworks, along with the police department and the fire department also being in attendance. It was a great day for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tree Committee, Ms. Sandy Stead.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Hello.
Nice to see everyone. So haven't really had a chance to speak with Charles, but I think we have been corresponding and agree on everything. This is just a brief outline of where we are thus far.
Close, huh? Is it working? There we go.
It's intermittent.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, great. So this is just a brief outline of where we are this far. We have received our D.R.G. Resource Group inventory, our summary, and our treekeeper software. So I'm not a software expert, but I do understand when someone else helps set it up. We have a meeting shortly with Charles and myself for the beginning of the training. And from what I understand thus far, the group that's going to be training us on the software also will be supporting us for the entire year. The software was one year free, so it's a bit overwhelming to me in the beginning when I kind of grasped it, because we're used to getting a report, which is a booklet, and that's really a static report. The exciting thing about this is it's live, ongoing, and current. So there's lots of capabilities, lots of things that we can do moving forward. But again, software is not my expertise. So we do have, and I wanted to announce to everyone, a new volunteer, and he's here in the audience, and it's Sean Stockmeyer. So Sean's a longtime resident of the village. Can he come up and just introduce himself?
Sure.
And he's a software expert.
Sean?
How are you?
He actually doesn't need a microphone.
So, yeah, so I guess my background is a fourth-generation, sorry, fourth-generation Rockland resident. My father was the mayor of Upper Nyack, born and raised in Upper Nyack, been in Suffolk since 2000 or 1999. And I am, and when my dad was mayor, we had a Green Belt Initiative in Upper Nyack, and I'm very interested in Suffolk and in keeping this community the way, you know, the beautiful way I remember it. And I see some familiar faces who recognize me, hopefully. My background is aerospace engineering from MIT, University of Michigan. So, yeah, I guess as far as computers go, you could say. I also, if anybody remembers Spiral Net, I had the first ISP back in the early 90s here in Rockland County. So, yeah, so hopefully with some of the technical issues that either the board or people are having, this is something that I can...
How about our sound system?
Yeah, sure. I can gladly assist or at least put my, you know, my two cents in. And I also, you know, you were talking about, I'm not sure if it was Facebook, and I'm not familiar with what you're talking about in terms of posting pictures, but I'm also the, for Nyack High School, I'm the alumni chair. I run the alumni group for Nyack High School Facebook, so I know really well about, you know, having to, what the best way we've found for people to get things posted, even if there's discrepancies in, let's say, politics. So...
That seems to be the issue, but let's, we'll talk about the trees and the tree committee.
Yeah. So as far as the trees are concerned, and I know, you know, John Wicks, we go back to, you know, for a long time, and, you know, with the trees, it appears that it's a cloud-based system, and obviously, which is a great thing. And the question is, you know, obviously, you're going to want, and I've had a lot of people contact me personally who are very concerned, you know, who saw tags on their trees. I live in the West Ward, you know, so, you know, I woke up one morning and I had a tag on my tree, and my neighbors had tags on their trees, and they were all freaked out. And a lot of people don't understand that, I don't know the proper term, is it right-of-way, meaning that the town has...
Right, the trees were in the right-of-way and that they were tagged.
Right.
Yes, when they were doing the inventory, the complete inventory.
Right. And again, nobody knew, and some people were freaked out about that. And now, you know, we've got the software, and what's great about it is for the population, they can see the trees, they can see the CO2 values...
Right.
Which I think is fantastic. They can see the old-growth trees, but there's also the admin side of things for...
The administrative part of managing... Am I coming over?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I can't, no, it's not...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm trying to get my mic, there we go. I'm trying to get the microphone to work. No, we're excited, and we always were excited to work with Sandy and the tree committee, but like moving forward to incorporate, we appreciate you coming up and introducing yourself and, you know, going to work closely with the tree committee. It's vital, important committee here we have in the Village of Suffolk, but we definitely look forward to it if we want, if you want to say something, Sandy, it looks like you.
So...
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very much. Thank you.
So this is how we met. Sean called me, and he said, "What's the tag doing on my tree?"
Oh, okay.
He said, "They're not taking it down, are they?" I said, "Oh, no." So, okay, to move forward in what Charles and I, we are scheduling our training session, you know, with the DRG group, and I'm hoping that Sean will be able to, you know, get involved with that so that we can get a full understanding of the program, the capabilities, the aspects of it. And then I thought what we do, we'll come to the next workshop, present to you and board, you know, what we, after we've done some discussion, you know, what we think the next step should be, because there was an evaluation, suggestions, and then, you know, for the mitigation. And some of them, we haven't dug into it, but some of them might be imminent, like a tree that could be, you know, dangerous or something. So if that is in agreement with all of you, we'll do some training. Our tree committee next meeting is the 21st, so we'll present all of this to the tree committee, get some suggestions that they can, because they now have this summary, they'll be able to dig into the software. All the residents will be able to click on and just see what's happening with our trees. They don't have passwords, you know, and can't make any changes, but I think that's very exciting, so. And so that's it. Any questions that you might have?
I took a look at what was online. I know it hasn't been necessarily fully released to the public yet, but I took a quick look at it, and I noticed that quite a number of trees were listed as being only in fair condition. And is that to be expected, or do we have a serious matter on our hands that needs attention?
Well, this is what happens, I believe, when we've researched this, when years and years go by, that you don't have the proper maintenance. So through whatever, no one's fault, it's just the idea that there was no tree committee five, six years ago. We became Tree City USA. That has motivated and moved everything forward. So, yeah, and that's a big issue with climate change and environmental issues, et cetera, and real estate values. So our trees are really important. So this will be, again, not a static report. The booklet we received from Bartlett, it was extremely interesting and had so many aspects to it, but it's two years old. So, you know, this, to me, is the way to go, so.
Thank you, Sandy.
I can just...
I'd like to report. Go ahead.
Okay, just two, yeah, it's a great summary. Is it possible, and I didn't get a response back from Mike, or, you know, with your input for the tree committee to continue with the virtual meeting? The governor has extended that. It's very hard for anyone...
No, the virtual meeting is fine for the tree committee.
With the Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And then one other simple little request. I don't know if our code enforcers are here tonight, but I see a lot of hedges that are totally overgrown, and one of them is really upsetting to me because it's the corner of my street in Washington, that Avon Perfume Factory, the original Avon site. I know it's a landlord now, and it's been converted into an apartment complex, but that hedge is going to be totally ruined.
You know, call us with the, if you like, you know, call the office, call May, or call Code Building Department and give them the address, and they'll take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to open the meeting up to public participation. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to participate, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. We have a limited time to four minutes, and questions will be answered at the end. If they're not able to be answered, they'll be responded to.
Hi, Robert Morris, 206, excuse me, 206 St. Oxford Lane. I am just listening, and I was pretty amused to hear members of this board talk about ethics. It's not too long ago that a secret meeting was held, an attorney was hired illegally, I might add, and the members of the board knew their actions were illegal, and yet they chose to go on with it, created a legal problem for the village that wound up costing the village thousands of dollars to have to sue to rectify the problem. Unfortunately, the village didn't take any action against them, which they were entitled to do in the spirit of cooperation, but based on their history, ethics is about the father saying that certain members of this board should talk about. You've selected Michael Curley to be the candidate for mayor. I have a problem with that. I would think that if you're going to select... I would think that if you're gonna select the candidate for mayor, you would take somebody.
Is this about village business?
Excuse me?
Is this about village business?
I would think that a candidate running for office would at least have the forthrightness to have paid his village taxes. When I, I did a review of Mr. Curley's taxes, 84 Orange Avenue, I found that he owes the Village of Suffering $332,000 in back taxes.
This is a political.
And that's including water and sewer. I left a package up here which demonstrates all the years that he went on with this. And I, I just find it amazing, but again, based on the past actions of members of the board, Mr. Curley is gonna fit right in with your method of doing things.
Did you just come in from Florida yesterday?
We've gone through that, haven't we, Joe? Once again, you're confused. If you remember when I was on the board, I flew in. And you can check the minutes, I didn't miss a meeting.
This has nothing to do with village.
You know, again, listen, I defeated you in the election and you're still sulking about it. We will remind you though, that when Ed was the, won the mayoral job and I became the deputy mayor, the last tax increase that you and Tricia Barlow had was 14%. Since then, the mayor has kept the tax. He has kept the tax rate under the state cap.
It's interesting, but the mayor actually voted no on the last budget when the trustees got the tax to 1.1% increase, the lowest in over 25 years. So in fact, the mayor has been proposing very high taxes for the last five, six years that he's been mayor. And the board has been, since it's been Democrat, has kept it under the cap. I think your comments are misleading and I.
Actually, I do believe this is political and this has nothing to do with village business.
Really, well, let me clarify that again, Joe. Mr. Albert's remarks were clearly political and his remarks against the mayor. So if politics is good for you or him to speak about, then it's certainly good for the members of the public who pay your salaries. Am I correct or wrong?
The information should be presented accurately and truthfully, you are.
The information was presented, were you part of the group that hired the mayor?
I was not, actually, I voted no, if you wanna check the minutes, I voted no.
No, I understood you voted no, but neither did you take any steps to correct it. And you were advised that it was illegal.
I was not involved in that, that happened.
No, you simply voted no.
Nothing to do with that.
But you knew what was transpiring and you took no step.
This is not village business.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, that, thank you, your four minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Just to elaborate a little bit on the budget, as Mr. Albert elaborated on, the reason in regards to why I voted against the budget was due to the fact that you would not even provide the police department with the proper tools and resources needed for them to do their job properly. That is the reason, the budget was an excellent budget, absolutely, but I am not gonna defund the police as this board has. Thank you, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I have something to say about you accusing us of defunding the police. That is ridiculous, we have supported this police department wholeheartedly and there's nothing more closer to my heart than our first responders.
And why did you cut the budget, the police budget and the police cars? Can't explain that, it's in the budget, thank you.
It was we.
I just wanna point out that this year.
What's necessary.
Sorry, gentlemen, Michael Curley, 84 Orange Avenue, I hope, since I had a personal attack that wasn't factually based, I hope I, I'm gonna ask for more time. But first I'd like to, some good news, this was the most successful day of me serving hamburgers and hot dogs. I sold over 100, 1,000 hamburgers and about 1,200 hot dogs. I anticipated because of COVID, some people couldn't participate, so I actually bought more and that was the highest amount I ever gave out, besides pickles and everything else. And I'm, I'm glad to do this for the community for many, many years. Now, in reference to the IDA before, in reference to the Avon project, you have to look at, I actually got on the meeting on September 23rd with the IDA, watching out for the residents of this village and the town, okay? My concern with the, with the IDA is, we may be, I, I advise them to watch out for the taxpayers here. And the reason I did that was because Avon's gonna win on two points here. One, they're gonna win on the point of, they're gonna win on the point of Avon, under the pilot program, is responsible to give us tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Has, does anyone know what that number is we'd be giving up to this point? So I, I, I appreciate if we get into that, if the attorney could look into that, I wanna know what the village would be giving up, number one. Number two, during that meeting that I monitored, I've been monitoring for months, the Avon, the new buyer, was gonna meet with the IDA later that day. So they're trying to get a double taxation break. Under the breaking of the pilot program, Avon is supposed to give us this much money. And we are supposed to get, we should get full taxation on this. So we're gonna lose on both ends and I really don't want that to happen. Now, in reference to the taxation thing that Mr. Morris brought up, okay? The village is not owed one dime, the village gets reimbursed by the county. In 1991, on that end of town, there was an eminent domain project where they took my property, okay? Took my property and to this day, I was never paid for it. So all those cars that are driving on a thruway right now is part of my property, okay? So for, so I let it go for years, then I decided to fight it because I was tired, because I was told that they would change it. So in 1998, under a federal judge's signature, the county of Rockland said they were assisting in changing the tax maps, while they never, ever changed the tax maps. I then, in 2014, said I had enough, I stopped paying. They proceeded with a proceeding in REM, I had to force them to change my tax maps.
You stopped paying?
It went to, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm gonna finish.
No, I, I just missed a line, I just missed what you said.
It was a proceeding in REM proceeding, Mr. Mayor, do you understand what that is?
No, I'm, no, I was asking you for clarification on what you said, that's all I'm saying.
Proceeding in REM.
Go ahead.
Okay, they were asked, they were asked, they were asked to change the maps. I have, we signed an agreement, I signed an agreement, under a federal judge's signature, they would do that. The county of Rockland reneged on the deal, reneged on the, they never did it. They finally have done it now, of 2019. The county now, I have emails from the county telling the town around the po, we were wrong, we should have changed the tax maps. They now have changed the tax maps and they have been made whole for those years since. You'll see, if you go and look in village records, you'll see my taxes are paid. If you go look at town records, you'll see my taxes were paid last week for the school taxes. If you go look at the water bills, you'll see they were paid, okay? There is a fight there that a judge and a jury has to tell us what they.
Time's up, Mr. Curley.
No, it's, I asked for more time from this board.
We're gonna give Mr. Morris more time.
Yes, you did, so I don't care if you gave Mr. Morris more time, I, okay, thank you.
But no, your time is up.
No, can I have more time from the board, please?
You may have more time.
Can I have more time? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, okay? Now, all you had to do was ask, okay? Does not, you're not hearing enough.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so the county now has now asked for a settlement. And the county has offered me a settlement now. And it's my choice on whether I'm gonna accept that settlement for that land they took from me or not. It's all public record, I can show everyone the letters, okay? But they took my property and gave me not zero dollars. I'll tell you what else happened at that end of town. The guy next to me went bankrupt, another guy burnt himself down from the pressure and the, and all the other buildings went bankrupt. I survived, I apologized to no one for surviving. I apologized for no one because I understand the tax law and I understand that these village taxpayers have been overtaxed and they can't take it anymore. And I'm the right guy to fight, I know the tax law better than anyone. Now, the county has a choice, the county, the county admitted they were wrong now and I have all this information. I have all the information showing the county was wrong. And once we decide that number, and hopefully, they owe me and I don't owe them. For 31 years, for 31 years, and all the interests, okay, do you know what the interest on that is? You don't know, because you're not educated enough, right? So he, you can't give half a story, he didn't even know there was eminent domain and that.
All right, I think, I think the time's up there, Mr. Curley, and, I mean, as you indicated, I hope the settlement works out and then you paid the, the arrears that you owe, if that's, if that's the case.
Well, I don't know if there is arrears, the county, they gave me money based on the taking of the.
Okay, I mean, you did state that you did stop paying your taxes.
I stopped paying because you overpaid.
Okay.
Because I, because, because from 19, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying, because from 1991.
Thank you very much, that's all.
I overpaid.
Didn't you say you actually paid anything that was due recently?
Sure, since they changed my tax map, since they fixed it, they only fixed it now. And luckily, I got the information from the county, the town around the po has fixed the tax map now.
Nice.
So I paid everything there, now we have to settle and see how much.
How much you owe.
How much they owe me.
Oh, not how much you owe.
No, because they did this mistake since 1991, Mr. Curley.
Okay, okay.
So when I, when I.
That's why you're going to reach a settlement agreement, thank you very much, I just shortened it up for you.
Thank you for your time, oh, one more thing, but thank you, okay? Mr. Barone, I'm gonna ask you a question.
I think the time's up and we, we went through this, this is, how many minutes now?
Thank you, Mr. Barone.
Way over, way over the time, Brian, so you can ask the question in writing to Mr. Barone via email.
Mr. Board wants to hear the question.
Oh, you wanna hear it, okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Curley. Have a nice day, okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, there's, there's somebody else. Help yourself to a sheet of papers and I'll tell you to. Okay, Mr. Curley gave a nice speech, he owes back to 2007 taxes. Why is he going to court, why is the, the county taking him to court to pay $232,000 in back taxes? Don't tell me this is political, because he went the gammas, okay? And if I wanna stay here for 15 minutes, I will.
Oh, it's at the timer.
And you, Ms. Corrigan, signed the tax warrant that he owes taxes. And you're gonna make believe you don't know it? Now I guess that's political toll. There it is, black and white. Black and white. Plus, the water bills were not paid, they were added on to the village taxes every year and sent to the county. Yes, the county reimburses the village in April every year, which means not only the, the village residents didn't see the money come in on time to pay village. But it went to the county and the county's taxes went up to cover his taxes. So you get double barrel payments. You guys talk about politics, you're running with a guy that's a tax cheat. And you're standing there trying to defend this. And I'm gonna hand these out, just like Mr. Curley handed his hand out three meetings ago. Have a nice day, but the truth just killed you.
Thank you, just to be clear, the public, but there will be, Mr. Curley, you had your shot. Just to be clear on the re-leveying of the village taxes, so what takes place for the public so they're made aware that when any individual is in arrears of their taxes, the, the Village of Suffering sends the taxes to the county as a re-levee and the county reimburses the village for the outstanding amount a few months later. So that, that's the process of how that works.
Thank you.
I'll just put on the record, there is no, Mr. Giantino's 100% wrong once again, there is no taxes owed from 2007, all right? It's, it's an argument between 2014, based on the, based on the taking of my land, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curley.
I'm just curious about one more thing, a couple of years ago, you charged Mr., you, you called the district attorneys off against Mr. Giantino for bribery. Whatever happened with that case?
There was no founded information, Mr. Curley. Ho, ho, ho.
This is just.
All right, now Jim, that's it, no more.
Did you file a tax surcharge yearly for every year you felt you were wrong? No, you did not.
All right, thank you, that's it, you're cutting it off, that's it, public participation is closed. Chief, we will not have anyone else to the microphone, please. Other than, hold on, Joe, other than people that did not speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, Ms. Bivin?
I told you you'd remember that line, Ed. I have two issues to, to bring to the board's attention and they're completely unrelated, so don't try and find a correlation between the two. My first one, our condo had their annual meeting last week and our property manager made a statement that he had contacted the village regarding the disrepair of the Belgium blocks on Parkside Drive, asking them if they would be doing the repair. And he made the comment that if the village wouldn't fix it, he was gonna have our contractors fix it at unit owner's expense. Do you want my second question first or you?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, just to ask all your questions, but I didn't hear the first part of it, so I apologize.
That's okay.
So if you could repeat the question and then we'll try to get answers to you either now or after the meeting.
Sure, we had our annual condo meeting last week and our property manager made a comment that he had contacted the village regarding repairing Belgium blocks on Parkside Drive that are adjoining our property but village responsibility. And he said that if the village wasn't going to be doing the repair, he was gonna have Stone Gates contractors do it at condo expense. So it's a village responsibility, correct?
Not sure, but do you have any further questions?
I do.
Okay.
Unrelated to that. On November 9th of 2020, at the board meeting, I raised a question about signs in the right of ways. And at that meeting, Mayor Markounis, Mr. Magrino and trustee Corrigan all assured me that I would get a response. And I followed up, in fact, with an email to Mr. Magrino and Mayor Markounis on November 17th, 2020. And I have gotten no response from anybody since. Mayor Markounis, you and I have talked about on numerous occasions how Suffering doesn't function in a vacuum and that it's important to know how other municipalities handle things. So I was hoping that Mr. Magrino could fill us in on how Orange Town handled the issue and what their thought process was in their decision-making. That's the end of my questions.
That's the end of your questions. Okay, we'll, we'll speak to the points at the end of public participation if we can.
Okay, if I could just add one thing, then if you're gonna address, it was sort of gonna be in response to what you were gonna say, but I don't know what you're gonna say. So with regard to the signage in right of ways, I hope that you will keep section 228-26 of the village code in mind, which states possible adverse effects of signs on nearby public and private property shall be minimized. And unfortunately, in last year's election, that was not the case.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, can you let us all know, seeing that we have a few people running this year, exactly what that spot is? Thank you.
Okay, Lance Weinstein, for Value Terrace. Trustee Barone, you mentioned at several meetings about this tape. You brought it out in a public setting, it should have stayed behind closed doors, but you felt the need to air it out to the public. So you have no problem talking about it. My direct question to you is, what's on that tape?
So we'll take the questions as we said.
I don't wanna be involved in a cover-up. I have asked for the tape, I have not received it yet, when I do, I will play it for the public.
But you alluded to the fact there was issues on that tape that allegedly the mayor gave to the former village clerk, correct? So what are you telling me, you never even heard the tape?
The tape, I will play.
So you never heard the tape?
I heard the tape, I don't have it with.
Okay, so you have no recollection of what's on the tape?
Not enough to, to comment on the public.
Okay. My next question to you is, when you met with Tariq Hadler back in August, the former police officer, did you take notes during that meeting?
No.
Did you have any follow-up conversations with any trustees regarding that meeting?
If you wish to answer, you can answer.
I will answer at the end.
Okay. Trustee Corrigan, did you sign a tax warrant against Michael Curly? It's a yes or no answer.
Well, that was a while ago, so I will have to look back on the records.
So you have no recollection?
I can answer at the end.
Trustee Albert, you indicated that you kept the tax cap below, but if I remember correctly, there was significant money in the budget to police cars for the police department. But you elected to fund one. Answer for that. I sent numerous emails to all the trustees.
Sure did.
And you failed to answer them, so maybe you can answer them now.
We made a judgment of what is necessary. We feel that one vehicle was sufficient in the budget.
Okay.
That is my job as a fiduciary, my fiduciary duty is to protect the residents from excessive taxes. The village taxes are too high, and with all due respect to the wonderful work that the police do, I think they are the best police force in all of Rockland County, if not New York State. I think they're a fantastic police force. However, as a resident of this village, I believe we are overtaxed, and if you look at the percentage of tax, it is too high.
Okay, but maybe Mr. D'Neel can correct me. If I remember correctly, you were way below the tax cap.
The tax cap is not.
Let me finish. There was a significant amount of money, and part of that money could have been used to fund that second police car with no impact to the village residents.
That's not true. So let me interrupt, because this is important. I want to make this clear. We passed a budget with a 1.1% increase. If we had purchased everything that everyone asked for, it would have been higher. Yes, we would have stayed below the cap, that is correct, but the residents are already taxed too much. I'd like to see the tax rate go negative. I'd like to see it next year be $100,000 lower than this year. That is my goal.
I didn't ask what everybody wanted. I'm specifically talking about the second police car, that you failed to fund.
You have a vested interest as a former police officer.
Exactly, and safety is a priority. And after Chief Lachlan gets up here and explains to this board that these officers are responding to a domestic involving a knife, and the car dies.
I'm gonna put something in the public here. Chief Lachlan, how many, how many, what's the word I'm looking for? When the police are on duty, there's a certain number of tours, a certain number of officers assigned to any shift.
Steve, should we wait at the end?
Let me just ask this question.
He's asking.
There's, we have far more vehicles currently than the number of actual shifts that are on duty. I think that there could be a different assignment of how the vehicles are used, and I think there's plenty of vehicles that are fairly new vehicles that are sufficient for the police department. And that is the opinion, and I have a right to my opinion, in order to protect the residents from excess taxation.
So you're saying the extra surplus of vehicles are good enough for the road?
I'm saying there's more vehicles than they need. In fact, they're getting rid of three vehicles this year. They're surplusing three vehicles. That tells me they have more vehicles than they need.
Or it tells you that the vehicles are no longer roadworthy and they need to be replaced. Having said that.
Replaced or not replaced, they're getting rid of three vehicles.
You're replacing two fire chief's vehicles. Did any of the trustees have a conversation with Joe Hunt in regards to how much money was just sunk into the two vehicles that are currently being operated?
I don't believe Joe shared the exact numbers.
Did you have a conversation? Did you approach him and ask him? Did you do any homework before you made that decision to fund two new fire chief's vehicles? Did you have a conversation with trustee?
We have not yet exactly funded.
Don't speak for everybody.
Fred, did you have a conversation with Joe about that? Charles Burrow, same question. Corrigan, same question. Did you educate yourselves before you decided?
I O E for lands.
So how much money, how much money did they put in to the two vehicles?
Thank you, man.
The two fire chief vehicles. Maybe Joe Hunt can answer that for me.
Mr. Weinstein, thank you. What I could say out of that exchange is that I take the professional opinion of the department head, from the chief of police, to the director of DPW, to the fire chiefs, and the recommendation, professional recommendations of the needs of that department in regards to officer's safety, fire safety, and DPW's safety. That's what this board needs to consider. This board doesn't need to consider if we're going to save $10 a year and not purchase that second vehicle for a police officer. That's officer's safety, that's public safety at risk, that's what we are talking about, and that goes to every other employee of the village of suffering.
Absolutely, Ed, you're 110% correct.
I'm asking for a little bit more time, quick.
So there's, we're not on this board, there is no one on this board that would ever, I am speaking.
After Chief Lachlan got up and recommended two cars.
Okay, so.
You noted on your pad of fund you, you wrote down something, and you tried to conceal it with your eyeglasses, and then you showed it to Trustee Corrigan, and then you whispered only one. To refresh your recollection, go back to that video 35 minutes in, and you'll see what I'm talking about. So your mind was already made up to fund one car.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. Ms. Corrigan?
You want me to publicly speak?
No, I thought you had something to say, I'm sorry.
You cut me off.
I wasn't saying anything. Next.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
The dust is flying, so I'm gonna throw a little bit more dust at you. How's that sound? Joseph Funt, CSCA, Village of Suffering, Unit President, 8369. We have a little bit of cleanup to do left, and obviously with Dakota Ethics and Sunday Pay, we've been closing some doors. But since 2016, we've been fighting an issue, and Keenan Bean was dissolved and was never settled. That's all, I'm gonna elaborate on that. Excuse me. Definitely needs to be met with lawyers, mayor, and the board to resolve this union issue. I don't want to publicize it at this point, besides what I just said. Number two, I want to thank Kathy Mills, the board, and all the department heads for doing their part in making Suffering Day really better. But, as CSCA president, we did a donation, and we didn't get recognized in the beginning of this whole process, which is a shame, because we continue, and we will continue, to support this village open-heartedly, whatever cost we can do in supporting programs. But again, it's the second time, and I just want to make it clear that it ain't fair to the members of the CSCA.
Well, thank you, Joe, and I did mention you on the stage. Thank you to the CSCA for your generous donation of $500.
You did it at the second.
I'm sorry?
You didn't do it in the beginning, when everybody else, and we weren't put on a piece of paper. Mistakes are made.
Yes.
Happening. Kathy clarified the mistake to me, and I understand, but I just want to make it clear that we are a important part of this village. We are a union here, and the members do count. There's a lot of members that are voting factors here, and live and pay taxes in this village. Okay. Number two, we had a little issue in 2018 with one employee. A stipulation of agreement was signed by the union and the mayor, meaning the village. A stipulation becomes part of a contract. Right, Michael? I mean, Mr. Magrino? Sorry. I had money on the mind. Okay? Stipulation wasn't completed on the village side. So we like to go into discussion behind closed doors and try to resolve these issues without cost factor, mainly to the village. Because when it comes to the union, I have plenty of lawyers in Albany, and you have to travel up to go to perp. And again, it's a union thing, trying to save the village money, and I have, since I've been the union president, I've tried to resolve issues at hand in your office. And you know we have resolved some, and we haven't. And we had to bring the lawyers into it. But I like to continue to go forward. We're trying to leave the lawyers out. I'm not saying Mr. Magrino needs no less money. You know, everybody needs a little bit more, and he can't get double time on Sunday, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Village Board.
Yes.
I just wanted to answer for myself, for Suffering Day. Joe and the CSCA, it was completely my error for not mentioning the CSCA. Joe, I apologized. It literally was a clerical error. I wrote the list. I forgot to put in the CSCA. Hold on, Joe. So it was my error, and I want all the CSCA to know how much I appreciate them, how much I enjoy working with them. I would never intentionally forget or not mention them, so I can't explain it enough. It was, no, it was my error, and that's all I can say, is my apologies for it.
Joe, as soon as Kathy was made aware of it, she came right to me, and we.
No, she clarified it. I did get an attitude, because I'm an Irish Italian. But at the end of it, she is one of my best friends, working friends. And when she showed me that she had two folders on it, I did not do the paperwork process properly, because I'm union president, I thought I had a little leeway. I didn't fill out the donation form. And when she went to do her letter, I mean, I just want to clarify, you know, that it did take a toll on me and some of my members. But again, I forgot to answer something, if you would let me, about the fire chief's cars for Mr.
I think we had enough of going through the fire chief's cars and the cars, I think we're.
He did foil the stuff, but I never gave it, well, we tried to give it to Amy before she left, and then she left, so he never got to foil.
Okay.
So it was about $4,500 between both cars.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I believe Ms. Inverbrant wanted to say something, because she left something off. Please, yes, keep it short, please.
I was trying really hard to stay out of the fray of what went on before me, but it's hard to ignore some of what was said. Mr. Barone, I have to say that I agree with you wholeheartedly that the village, that the residents are entitled to know what went on regarding the tape that you brought up several meetings ago. However, you're failing to give, despite people asking questions, you are telling us that you have no recollection or you'll have to check your records. What you did at that meeting was the equivalent of bad tabloid reporting. You threw something out that you knew was gonna catch our attention, and oops, I don't know the details of it. So just make your own conclusions, knowing that people would draw very negative conclusions. So I would personally like to see you follow through. I think you are correct, the residents are entitled to know. But just giving us one quick headline that's clearly slanted in your favor is not doing the residents any favor.
I understand.
Thank you.
So I would like to hear details from you to back up what your accusations, there were serious accusations, and I think the residents deserve to have you provide details. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? If not, Mr. Zawicki, do we have any knowledge of the Belgian blocks on Parkside Drive that are in need of repair, or if they belong to the Stonegate condos?
Good evening. The, what I believe we're discussing here is the Belgian block right on Park Avenue.
Parkside.
I'm sorry, Parkside.
Right, Parkside.
Park Avenue does not happen, Charles, trust me.
Parkside, forgive me.
Doesn't even have curbs.
And that is in the right of way and is owned by the village, and in terms of the condo association replacing them, you know, that would be something we'd have to have further discussion, and of course, a permit would be required to do so, so, and probably a bond, and we'd have to maybe talk to Mr. Magrino.
Can we replace them? Can we make the repair?
The plan, well, we have made a few repairs, some of are very, just loose. So the directive there was to pick up the ones that are loose, make repairs where we can, and the plan would be to replace them next year as part of our roadway improvements number, Phase 12.
Phase 12.
And which be able to also mill and resurface that section of Parkside.
Okay, all right, perfect. Can we just carry this discussion on after? We'll speak and we'll follow up with it, because we can't continue to go with the back and forth, I'm sorry. Charles, if we could follow up with me, and we'll follow up and have a plan.
Who is the property manager? I don't recall speaking to anyone specifically on that matter, no.
Follow up with me, I would gladly find out. All right, all right, thank you. Signs in the right of way, Mr. Magrino?
Right, to address the question, yeah, you know, political signs, like all the signs, there's a plethora of case law on this, they have to be treated the same. Any sign regulation has to be basically irrespective of content. So, you know, you can't say, well, political signs can't be here or there, et cetera. So to answer your question, yes, Orange Town did recently enact a change with sign code which included signs in rights of way, which prohibits signs in rights of way. It doesn't apply only to political signs, it applies to all signs, so anybody, you know, putting a sign, theoretically it's prohibited. It's similar to a law that's in Clarkstown. I can tell you, having a private office in Clarkstown, I don't think they enforce it because they're all over the place on the. What I'll say is, so far, in Orange Town, what I've seen, I think because it's kind of an off-election year, there are local elections, but not really anything, I don't think, above town, well, county executive, of course, but it just, I don't, anecdotally, I haven't seen them in rights of way. That may change, but that answers your question, that Orange Town did recently change it. Again, it's a difficult area, only because, you know, freedom of speech, people have a right to post signs, but there you can regulate. So that is something that was on in Orange Town, if this board wished to look at that, I'd certainly speak to the board about it. Well, the issue with, the only, this is the last I'll say, and again, I, you know, I'll certainly speak to you offline on this. And my understanding is, I did look into this a little bit, my understanding is that it's been a custom of practice to allow signs in the rights of way, you know, so that's something that.
Like you said earlier, I don't think you could restrict it, they have to be treated equally.
Unless it must have changed.
It's an expression of freedom of speech in the First Amendment. But still, it's still, you're limiting the freedom of speech, unconstitutional, but.
Not on your own property.
On your right of way?
No.
All right, we're gonna have to continue this offline. Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Zawicki? Thank you.
All right, as a follow-up to the tree committee discussion, a tree risk assessment of all village-owned trees, approximately 1,600 trees, has been completed by Davy Resource Group and will be available in a PDA format shortly. So I had made that request so that we would be able to actually get a document in front of us and review it, and rather than needing, having the need to go on, you know, utilizing some software and so on and so forth. So we want to be able to determine which trees need some mitigation and which ones do not. We'll have that PDF hopefully in a short amount of time. The Waste Water Tree Upgrade Project Contract One is currently underway with a late spring scheduled completion. Contract Two has not started in the field as of yet. That most likely will start the latter part this year. Duane Avenue Project is near completion, waiting on O and R guide wire relocation. So we met with O and R. This has been a very slow process in getting them to take care of this. We're hopeful that within the next week or so that that will be relocated, and we can bring the contractor back in and finish that work.
We really need to ensure that Claire's memorial is put back in place.
Yes, yeah.
It's been a while.
We'll have some more discussion on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The 2021 Right of Way Improvements Project is underway with a October 15 scheduled completion. So the curbs up on Sagamore have, you know, have been started. I think they're just about half. I think they're just about halfway done. Um, the ADA ramps on Bonner Circle are gonna start, uh, I believe is gonna start tomorrow on that. The, uh, Right-of-Way Improvements Phase 11 Project has been slightly modified. O and R has, um, plans of replacing the gas man on Cypress Road and a portion of Forest Drive. Uh, as a result, uh, Cypress Road from Sylvan Way to Forest Drive will be deferred to next year, and Bridge Street will be added to Phase 11. So the actual square yardage is a little bit less, um, on Bridge Street than it would be on that section of Cypress. And roadway, uh, improvement work will be, uh, commencing, um, actually tomorrow, milling will start tomorrow, and should have a, um, scheduled completion of October 30th. The annual hydrant flushing project is underway with a scheduled completion date of October 15th. So last week, uh, this is the most important item for me. So last week I spent, um, or I sent a request, uh, to the board and the treasurer requesting funds to replace DPW vehicles. And that was to, um, utilize COVID money along with indoor bonding funds, uh, to replace four vehicles. Um, I did send a, a request prior to that, uh, requesting, um, vehicles to be replaced, uh, utilizing the COVID money, and I know there's been some discussion on where that money's gonna go. Since that email was sent, um, Saturday, let's see, what we got, we got, yeah, um, garbage truck, uh, 2020, uh, 2001 has now a blown transmission. Saturday was determined that the trackless unit needs an engine. Uh, that's, uh, that's a 1987 unit. And today, a heavy-duty truck, dump truck, 2001 had blown a rear differential, and, uh, that was, um, that could have, someone could have gotten hurt on that one, so we're, we're very concerned. The, um, axle actually, uh, was separated.
Separated.
Yeah, so, so, um, funding is desperately needed here, so I'm not, just to refresh the, um, the board's memory, we have the requested vehicles, is a 2001 Dodge Dakota pickup, it's 20 years old. Uh, 1994 International 4,600 dump truck, 27 years old. 2000 GMC with dumpster dog body, uh, dog dump body, and that's 21 years old. And then a, um, 2000 F-450 pickup truck, um, and that's 21 years old. So these vehicles are extremely old. The street, uh, maintenance department, maintenance group, maintenance mechanics have done, uh, an astounding job of holding these vehicles together. Uh, but we've reached a point now that, um, unless we take immediate action, we're not gonna be able to provide the proper services to the village, which includes ice and snow control. So, uh, I know I had some brief discussion with the mayor and you've set up a meeting. Hopefully we could, um, get some things resolved and, and, so the other problem that we have is, um, vehicles are difficult to get. Whether they're a pickup truck, a dump truck, they're very difficult to get. The larger dump trucks, uh, could take a year, year to get. Uh, some other vehicles are, they're very scarce, very, very scarce. So I think we need to talk about having some flexibility and maybe even possibly looking at something used, or maybe even leased, or we want, I think we need to talk about multiple options and see what might play out best for the village.
Absolutely. So we have the meeting set for Wednesday at 10:00, is that correct? With me, you, and Michael?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Right. Yes, it's definitely imperative that we have, um, new vehicles before the winter.
Yeah, and if you have any specific questions, I think Joe is still here, if you have any specific questions about the vehicles and condition of the vehicles, uh, you know, Joe would be, uh-
Yep.
Better, better suited to go through those details. Any, any specific questions?
We need to replace as many as we can within the guidance of what we have and work out a plan like we said at the workshop, so pricing would be great. I understand the challenges for it, but, you know, that way we can just know what we're, what we're in for, you know? I mean, Mike Janito has given us good numbers, he has asked for the priorities, you've given them, so if we could just-
Yeah, I, yeah, with all due respect, we really need to do something. I think we've talked enough.
Right.
We really need to do it.
Right, agree.
You know what I'm saying? We really need to move forward with this because we're gonna be in-
We're at the end of the line here.
Yeah, I, I assume that we would be having a, a special meeting within the next week or so to approve everything.
Sooner the better. Okay.
All right.
Before we go, if-
Charles, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Albert is asking you a question.
So you had mentioned that some of these vehicles might take a year to get, which sounds like we don't have a year. So our, I would definitely propose and suggest that we do whatever it is that we can to get you up and running with everything you need for the upcoming snow season, you know? Um, because this would be a real problem for the village residents if they can't drive, you know, essentially.
Yeah, that's why I suggest we look at all possible options.
I, I agree with that. Do you have options you can propose? Do you have, can you do some research so you can provide the board?
Yeah, Joe's been spending a lot of time with this, um, and there's, um, there's very few vehicles that are-
Right. So please know that the board wants to do the right thing and take care of this problem as soon as possible.
With Charles' input, just so you know, I went into the state bidding process and got you round numbers for a pickup truck. Thirty-three weeks out if we order it tomorrow. Thirty-three weeks out for a brand-new truck.
Right, so-
So I'm working with, uh, state entities and seeing what they have in the pool. And the interim for the big trucks, Charles let me go out to, uh, where we bought the two MACs from, American Hydraulik and Hose Company in Patterson, New Jersey. I'm meeting with them and bringing Joe Magnetti at 9:30. We're gonna look at a hook-and-go 2014. Don't know how many miles it's got, and a couple city trucks that Bob probably left behind when he left. But, um, we need something because I can't guarantee you with the fleet that I have.
We're gonna, we're gonna work through this whole issue and, and explore all the possibilities. We're gonna have the fin, we're gonna look at the financing, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna have this ASAP.
Just so you know, at 3:30, we have, we found a broken spring in the right front side of R1, so now we're down to one garbage truck until we get to Springs, if we can get them.
All right. Thank you.
Please let us know as soon as the meeting is over what happened.
Oh, Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
Just a, uh, quick update, as the mayor had mentioned and others had mentioned, we're going to have a meeting Monday with the police department and the public works department to talk about vehicle replacements. There is a lot that goes into it. Um, I gave a report to the board on where we are with the money and what we can expect throughout the next year. And we will also look into things like grants as well. One bit of caution on financing, whether that be leasing a vehicle or otherwise, you cannot use ARPA funds to pay down debt. So it's either a matter of buying the vehicle with the ARPA funds or doing something different. In any event, as the mayor had mentioned, that'll be discussed in detail Wednesday. We'll come back to the board with some answers on that. Uh, one quick note on the tree committee, um, that's going to be a very helpful, a bit of software and, and a very useful tool for us to use in determining what we need to do on the capital side of things in replacing or removing trees. Um, and then also on the pruning side of things, there is part of that that talks about, that report talks about annual pruning, and that will help us in developing the estimates that we need for the budget for the forthcoming year to make sure our trees, uh, get and stay healthy. Um, with that, I'll go into some things. One, the first four things that I want to mention are resolutions that are not on the agenda, but I did submit them very late, uh, today. That happened because I had a discussion with our municipal financial advisor, and we're looking at bonds that were authorized in the past by the village board, but the projects were completed and we didn't use all of the bond money. That's a good thing. All right, so the project's completed under budget or perhaps with grant funds or other sources of, of revenue. In any event, these first four resolutions, and if it's okay with the village attorney, I'd ask that all four resolutions be presented as, at once, voted on with a first and a second, if that's all right?
Yeah, that could be the consent agenda, so to speak.
Yeah, so very quickly what they are is, uh, one, there were bonds that were authorized July 12, uh, July 10th of 2018, and we're looking, and the original amount was 1.5 million dollars, and we're looking to, um, to un, uh, unauthorize 1.150352. That's 1,150,352 dollars. Another bond that was authorized September 5, 2017, and that was in the amount of, I believe, 640,000 dollars. There's 293,000 authorized but unissued that we're asking be deauthorized. Another one was a 250,000 dollar bond, and actually, uh, that was a really nice one. We ended up doing the project for 108,000, fully funded by a grant. So we're asking for the full amount of 250,000 that was originally authorized, uh, November 8th of 2017. And the last one on our list is a, uh, a bond that was authorized originally April 11th of 2016, um, and then was amended later on, but it, the amount was, uh, I'm sorry, June 6th of 2016. Um, the resolution that was adopted April 11th of 2016, and that amount was originally 1.1 million dollars. There's 399,752 that we can deauthorize at this point. So if that's all right with the board, I'd like to ask for a, a motion, second and vote.
I have a, I have a question before we continue. So these amounts that we didn't spend that you want to deauthorize, have we been paying interest on those amounts?
No, we didn't, never borrowed the money.
Never borrowed the money? Okay, that's, thank you. I wanted to clarify that. Go ahead.
So do I have a res, uh, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as stated by Mr. Janito in regards to-
The four resolutions.
The four resolutions.
To rescind the-
To rescind the unissued bonds.
Motion, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this resolution is to authorize, um, myself to attend a New York State GFPA seminar, Downstate Falls Seminar, October 6th in, uh, Poughkeepsie, New York. Uh, the cost is 95 dollars, it's a one-day seminar, and it would be, other than that, just mileage and tolls.
I have the resolution authorizing the treasurer to attend, to attend the New York State GFPA seminar. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, the last item that I have is authorization to, um, utilize 50,000 dollars of available funds in the general fund. These are not ARPA funds, but available funds that we already have in the general fund. This is to finance the purchase of the ATV with trailer for the fire department that would be funded by a grant from, um, you know, the state senator had authorized the grant, or I should say sponsored the grant for us. And that the agency, the dormitory authority for the state of New York, is going to be the agency that processes that grant. So upon the approval of our application from DASNE, we would go ahead and we would request that first. We can't spend any money until we receive that approval with the date that we are authorized to go ahead and spend the money. We would spend 50,000 dollars of our own money upfront and then sub, uh, submit a request for reimbursement from DASNE for the 50,000, up to 50,000 dollar grant.
So I have the resolution here authorizing 50,000 dollars of general fund?
That's correct.
For the ATV with trailer. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
I wanted to, I wanted to thank our state senator Elijah Reichland-Melnig for arranging this grant. This is great news that the village won't have to pay.
All right, thank you. And I also want to note that, um, Fire Chief Jeremy Cowfer and his crew had, um, submitted the application, and Fred Rela is assisting in the processing of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Magrino?
Uh, okay, I have, uh, two resolutions, I'm sorry, I should say one resolution. The second one, we're not gonna put up, it was with respect to parking, uh, so we're still waiting for some information that we'd like to discuss with, uh, police department and with DPW, so we're not gonna vote on that one. But the first one would be, um, setting the, uh, public hearing for the community choice aggregation program. The first thing to do would be to, uh, adopt a local law on that, and we discussed that at the, uh, at the workshop. So this would just be standard, uh, language, secret language, and setting the hearing for November 8th at 7:15 PM.
So I have the resolution setting, declaration of intent for the village's up and board to serve as lead agency pursuant to secret for local law regarding community choice aggregation public, and setting the public hearing for when? I'm sorry.
November 8th.
November 8th.
Unless it's 7:00.
7:05 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Oh, go ahead, Charles.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I had, thank you.
Do we need to, uh, add, uh, you know, there was a talk about having another meeting about, uh, with the planner? Is that something we, we wanna?
Oh, yes, um, I'm sorry, uh, I spoke offline with, uh, Mr. Barone. I think the 18th at 5:00 PM seems to work for everybody? Does that work for, uh?
What day of the week is that?
Mr. Sal, that's Monday, that Monday that you said you were available.
Yes, if I said I'm available, then I'm available, I don't have to check, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So if you want to, uh, set that now, we could, instead of just indicate it's gonna be a special meeting, um, of the board, which, again, similar to a workshop, will be open to the public, but no public comment.
October?
October 18th. That's the Monday, uh, at 5:00.
5:00 PM.
I can be there.
Okay, I'd like to make a special, um, set a special meeting for Monday, October 18th at 5:00 PM. In regards to review of-
Well, it's a meeting with the planner, uh, to discuss, um, uh-
Comprehensive.
Creating-
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan.
Do I have a motion for the 5:00 PM meeting on October 18th?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting is set.
On Zoom, right?
Right, and that would be a, uh, a, a, a remote meeting, right. I'll send it out and, uh, it'll be published on the website, uh, I'll get to, uh, the village clerk for publication.
Okay, before we move any further, we have a gentleman in the back named Mr. Bruce Simon, I believe, that would like to speak. Come on down. Not the Price is Right.
No, not at all. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Just very, very briefly announcing on behalf of the Community Foundation, the next Not Just Battery Saturday event, Saturday, November 6th, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., downstairs here in the parking lot here at Village Hall, drive-in off, uh, Washington Avenue, socially distant, you don't get out of your car, we'll have people come out, take out your batteries, your paint cans, your computers, TVs, small appliances, medications, things that should not go in the garbage, should not go in the trash. We take them out, we take care of them, no cost, no charge, although donations are graciously accepted. We've been doing this for a couple of years, it's very successful. We could not do it without the approval of the village board, obviously, but we really could not do it without the members of the CSEA, the DPW workers who, we don't even have to ask anymore. As soon as we finish one event, they come and say, what's the next one and how can we help? So I have to give all the thanks and credit to them. I'm hoping we see everybody here, drive up, drop off, move on. That's it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Great job.
That's Saturday, November 6th, correct?
Yes, Saturday, November 6th.
And the hours again, once more, I'm sorry?
10 a.m. to 1 p.m.
Thank you.
Will be seeing you then if you're out, I presume?
I, if I am not working, we'll see. I've been working a lot of weekends. I've been working a lot of weekends, so I apologize for that.
If you have as many questions, you should come and ask them personally.
Thank you. Trustees.
I have an update. I'd like to read a statement. On a conference call-
On a conference call with both Suffering attorneys, it was revealed to me that Mayor Markounis had, on at least one occasion, secretly recorded a phone conversation with a member of this Board. I was that member. Secret recordings are illegal by Village law and punishable by a $10,000 fine. I formally requested in writing the Ethics Board be assembled to render judgment on the mayor's actions. The Village Clerk asked both Village attorneys for guidance, and both Village attorneys recused themselves and suggested outside counsel be hired. Two years ago, the mayor and the Board had a disagreement. The mayor sued the Board, and it resulted in an $80,000 legal fee. I do not want to incur any additional legal fees for this Village, so I do not want to hire outside counsel to pursue any ethics violations that the mayor may have committed. On May 16, 2019, the Village Board appointed members to the Village of Suffering's Ethics Board. The members of the Board are as follows. Reverend Kathleen DeBucen, Michael Zale, Fred Ellison, Gertrude Zimmerblatt, and Gabby By resolution of this Board, I would like the Ethics Committee to assemble on Monday, October 18 at 7:00 AM.
Seven.
And call, or 7:00 PM, and call witnesses and render a decision, and at that time, I would obtain the recording to which I will play for them. I was kind of a deer in the headlights when the attorney said I was secretly recorded. They played the tape for me, but I was so flustered that I have very little recollection of what was on it. I'd like to play it for the Ethics Board. I so move that the Board. Makes a resolution that the Ethics Board be assembled on October 18 at 7 o'clock, where they will hear evidence of this ethics violation. Can I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Any discussion?
Absolutely, there'd be a lot of discussion on this topic. First of all, there is much more to this complaint. And furthermore, if the Board will or should have done their research in regards to the ethics policy, the Ethics Board, the convening of an Ethics Board, public officers law, you will find that there are many flaws in and around this policy. In regards to the policy not being adopted properly, not being, not having the officers sworn in under oath, not having a Board in force, there is no chair, there is no policy, there is no procedure in place. So as of now, and this discussion should be taking place in executive session, make your motion, but I believe that you should be guided by counsel before you proceed. That's all I'm telling you.
I have some questions. So are you?
We are not, we are not going to hear an ethics complaint right here.
I am not going.
Go ahead.
And I am allowed to speak because it's?
I said, go ahead.
Why, thank you, King Mayor. Let me wave a wand over you. So therefore, are you saying that when you established this Board of Ethics, you never followed up and actually?
When the grievance was put in, the grievance by the union which was put in, that put a hold on the grievance, on the, on the ethics policy.
No, no, no.
Moving forward, the Board was never sworn in.
Am I still speaking?
You're asking a question, I am answering it.
I wasn't done. So does that mean that the Board of Ethics in the Village Code doesn't exist because none of the proper paperwork was done?
Because the grievance was filed and the proper paperwork wasn't done, correct. And that the Board members were not sworn in, creating a vacancy in office after 30 days. Correct. Check public officers law.
No, I understand that.
You understand public officers law?
So what I understand is that the administration did not do the right thing.
No, the, no, the administration did by putting it on hold due to the fact that the grievance was in place and it was unenforceable.
Ethics Board.
And the stipulation of settlement agreement sets forth the direction.
CSEA never would have come up against the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board wasn't designed for the CSEA.
Oh, that was designed for everyone, and they put the, the CSEA put the grievance in against the Village of Suffering and the policy. Correct. We're discussing this here. Go ahead, Mr. Magrino.
For the record, I did indicate, since it was brought up by Mr. Barone, due to the fact, various factors, I recuse myself. I was asked for legal advice and indicated that it would not be appropriate for me to give legal advice on this issue since I'm appointed by the mayor and approved by the Board, and it's a complaint basically by a Board member as against the mayor. With that said, the, for the good of the Village, it was recommended that an outside counsel be hired at no more than $5,000 to be billed hourly to provide guidance. I'm going to repeat that here because, you know, there was a mention of an $80,000 legal bill. I think that a, either 5,000 or now I've received a retainer agreement from an attorney for $2,500 that this attorney would review the matter and provide legal guidance. So that's an item that is out there, and I'm indicating that before the vote is taken. If the Board wishes to discuss it in executive session, I'll certainly discuss it further in executive session, but that is something that's, that's out there.
Okay, since we're in a chat.
No, no, hold on.
Okay, that needs to stop. Ed.
All right.
As the mayor.
Hold on, you don't have to tell me as the mayor. Does any other of the trustees have anything else?
I have a couple items, but.
Go ahead.
But I did want to ask, I did want to rather remind the public that it was you, Mayor Markounis, who assembled the Ethics Board in the first place, and you selected the members of that Ethics Board.
Thank you.
I just want to put that out there for the public, that if anything.
And I do want to put it out to the public that since we're going there, we do try to hire an attorney, which did cost the Village of Suffering upwards of $80,000 to $90,000 when you were warned not to do it. So let's continue. We need to work together.
It's together when people.
It's easier to work together when you're being told what to do and you do not listen.
Mayor, you have, you have a habit of.
Thank you for bringing my habits to the table.
You have a habit of bending the facts, and the actual issue is that the law firm that you hired for $80,000 donated to your campaign. So that's not exactly.
And you violated New York State Village Law. Okay? So we're moving on.
I didn't violate anything.
The Village Board did.
I'm weighing up.
All right, there we go.
I do have issues that I want to bring up during my trust.
Go ahead. Thank you.
First question, for, this is for the DPW. I don't know if Charles, oh, Charles is back there. Perfect. Okay, so I've asked in the past, I think for a couple of years, about Park Avenue. It keeps getting deferred. Can you speak to when we can expect Park Avenue, which is in terrible, terrible shape, when that can be paved? Because if there's things that are being rearranged for this year, maybe this should be the year that Park Avenue is done.
Okay. Again, O and R has plans of a gas main replacement on Park Avenue. The timing is uncertain, although it seems like it probably would be within the next nine months or so. So I would say that there's a good opportunity to review that and possibly get it on Phase 12, possibly, depending on the timing, but we certainly couldn't do it before that.
No.
Could we require Orange and Rockland to do the work themselves as part of any agreement for them to tear up the road? As opposed to us paying for it as Village residents, can we, you know, have Orange and Rockland?
Well, we do. As part of, we've, in the last, actually, we have two cost-sharing agreements that we worked out with O and R, and we would do the same on Park Avenue. So the area that they would disturb, they would pay us reburses for that portion of it, and then the Village would pay the rest. And we would get it, it would be done under a Village contract.
Okay. Second question, also involves, involves you. There's been some emails, as you know, and I've also brought it up at previous meetings. A resident, Mr. Robbins, there was an issue involving his sprinklers, and you had said in an email last week that a check is forthcoming by FedEx. Did that check arrive?
Actually, what we made, it did not. And we did talk with the contractor, he's hand-delivering it tomorrow. So based on what he's told me, I should have it tomorrow. And I would suggest that Mr. Robbins comes, picks it up personally, since last time he said he didn't get the check, which in fact he did, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Next, I have a resolution, approval of the minutes at the Board of Trustees meeting, September 13, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next resolution, approval of the minutes, Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting, September 27. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Next resolution, Board of Trustees, Special Meeting Minutes, Thursday, September 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to. Go into an executive session.
If the Board wants to or not, if the Board has.
Does the motion, does the Board desire to go into an executive session?
With respect to litigation.
With respect to litigation. Have one motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will reconvene shortly after the executive session. Okay, motion to exit executive session.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Mr. Magrino.
All right, I'm going to offer a resolution to retain the services of Attorney Amy Mealy for some not to exceed $5,000, a $2,500 retainer, a $275 an hour, for the purposes of providing legal assistance to the Village Clerk and/or Board of Ethics with respect to recent letter to the Board.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Second, Trustee Sappelman.
I recuse myself.
You're going to abstain?
Yes.
Anyone else?
I.
She was going to say something.
Oh, I, I.
You're in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I abstain.
So on the motion, we have first by Trustee Alpert, second by Trustee Sauerman, two abstentions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three to zero, the motion passes.
Motion to close.
Time, time, do we need to officially cancel the vote that didn't take place that we?
There was, there was no.
There was no vote.
There was no vote, okay, just want to make sure. That's fine. So that didn't happen. Very good. Perfect.
Motion to close.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.